All right, good afternoon. Now I'd like to bring the regular afternoon meeting of Township of Langley Council to order. And the first item is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Fox, second by Counselor Arnison. All those in favor, pose and carry it. Next item is the adoption of the minutes, the regular afternoon council meeting of February the 6th. Counselor Fox, second by Counselor Qualley. Any errors or omissions? All those in favor, pose and carry it. And so now a motion to resolve the special closed meeting for the items on the agenda and the items on table. Counselor Whitmarsh and Counselor Davis and Counselor Richter, you have something to add?
Yes, I have a question with regards to item C1. I'm wondering why it is in camera because there's no backup information in there justifying why it should be in camera. And the second thing is I'd like to add a personnel item.
A personnel, so we'll do that first. And then, item C1, it looks like property into governmental relations. Mr. Bakken, is something we'll discuss once we get into closed? And then, thank you.
So are we going to discuss this in closed? Because I don't see how either of those-
Okay, that's fine. So then we can't discuss it in open, so we have to take it to closed because it's on the closed agenda. Is that right, Mr. Bakken? Yeah?
Yes, your worship council could determine it's not appropriate for the closed agenda and then send it someplace else.
That's right. Yeah, thank you. So with that, I'll call a question. All those in favor, pose and carry it. Thank you. All right, good afternoon, and thank you for waiting. And I'll reconvene the regular afternoon meeting of Township of Langley Council. And we want to delegations and the Langley Sustainable Agriculture Foundation. Thank you. Welcome here. Or, sorry, presentations, not delegations. Presentations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I might need your- oh, there it goes. Perfect. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and councilors, and thank you so much for putting some time on your agenda for us to give an update as to what we have achieved in 2016 and what we want to achieve for 2017. We have four of our board members here. Dave Melnichuk is our president, and Charles Wilson is our vice president, and Nancy Clark is a board member, and I'm Carol Paulson, for those of you who don't know me, and I'm the secretary of the board. Okay, I need to figure out. So I know the time is very tight, so I'm going to talk about the foundation's achievements in 2016 and then what we plan to do for 2017. And then Dave Melnichuk is going to do the same thing for the Ecological Services Initiative. So we, in the foundation, did five separate things this year. The first was that we helped the township staff organize the farm tour. And we were very pleased that Counselor Fox welcomed the tour people, and Counselor Davilis and Counselor Richter were on the tour for the day, and we really appreciated the time you spent with us. The tour looked at two of the farms that are participating in the Ecological Services Initiative, and over lunchtime, Dave Zender, who's the coordinator for the program provincially, gave an update and a re-overview of the ESI. We hosted a workshop in the fall, farming as a second career. There were 63 people in attendance. And the mayor welcomed the people to the day and also explained how he took a second career into agriculture as well. The day resulted in an article in Country Life in B.C. One of the other things we're focusing on this year is updating and putting some rigor into our communications. We've updated our website, put links in our website, much more information on both the website and Facebook, and a couple of directors have been trained how to administer the website. One of the other things we did this year was change our bylaws so that we can have up to 17 directors on the foundation, basically because we're a nonprofit and non-staff foundation. So anything we plan or implement or manage, the directors actually have to do the work. And as you know, the Society Act, the New Society Act, came into place in November, and we are reviewing our bylaws to make sure that all of our bylaws are consistent with the New Society Act. We also held a strategic planning session in September. The original strategic planning session was five years ago when the foundation was established, and so we decided we needed to do another one this year. And we identified two items to achieve in 2017 and one for the longer term, and I'll go into some details with those in a moment. And just to keep you up informed on the ABC funds, the township directed $180,000 of ABC funds to the foundation early in the year. We have put the bulk of those funds into inter sparing certificates until we decide what programs we can implement that will benefit agriculture. We have used a very small amount to support the workshop, the facilities for a workshop we did a couple of weeks ago, and also for the website. So for 2017, one of our biggest initiatives is this Heritage and Innovation Farm Center. We have a small committee of our board who is looking at this idea, and when they met, they realized that there is all sorts of organizations in Langley that are interested in food and agriculture and poverty and education. So the chair of that committee is Gary Jones, and Charles Wilson sits on the committee as well. They convened a workshop two weeks ago, pulling in all the organizations in Langley that are interested in food and agriculture. And it turns out that there's 15 organizations attended, a couple couldn't. They shared what they're doing, and they shared what they want to do in food and agriculture. And out of that came nine distinct projects that these organizations want to build or expand in the township. The group obviously couldn't do any actual action plans because it's their initial meeting, but they want to meet again. And they've identified four areas to focus on: the concept of a food hub, the concept of food security, the concept of education or literacy or community gardens, and then a farm training center. So our hope is that eventually two or three or four groups will get together and move these areas forward. So for the foundation, our priorities for the year are to obviously foster this food and agriculture projects dialogue and action, and to investigate the possibility of a Heritage and Innovation Center. We also want to establish some scholarships and bursaries, and frankly, there's a whole range of possibilities there, whether they're bursaries, whether they're scholarships, which institutions they're for. We have a committee struck to deal with that. We also want to build our communications and outreach much stronger than we have in the past. We're going to focus on the Ecological Services Initiative. We want to host another workshop in the fall, and we have a great long list of ideas for that, and we need to revise our bylaws. So this is all being done by 11 people. So I'm going to turn it over now to Dave Melnichuk to talk specifically about the Ecological Services Initiative, and then we'll be happy to answer questions and give you some details.
You prefer to stay here?
Oh, I've got to stay here. I've got to stay here. I've got to push the right buttons.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Melnichuk, welcome here.
Thanks, Carol, for the initial presentation on the foundation. As you see, we've got lots on our plate, and we're all excited about the upcoming years. My presentation will focus on the ESI initiative, what we did in 2016, in touch on some of our plans for 2017. And Carol's going to help me here because there's some tricky stuff coming up, I think. Just briefly, a little bit on the background of, you know, what's the philosophy behind it? It is looking at a new tool to reward farmers for looking after ecological goods and services on their property. It's an initiative that's started in Europe, and it's coming to Canada, and we are here in Langley, one of six sub-projects or sub-regions to try out this concept. And it's basically trying to maintain and improve the health of our repairing areas and our creeks and our fisheries values. That's kind of the concept, and we're in this. It's really a pilot to see how well it can work. Are you okay? Yeah. Okay, thanks. So we're very fortunate that the township believes in the concept, and our foundation and the township entered into agreement, a three-year agreement, to test out this model. And it's based, the model is based upon the model they're using throughout the province.
So now we go to-
Now, there's this tricky stuff. I'm totally laughing. This is, the video was prepared by Metro Vancouver communication people, and some of you have probably seen it, some have not, but it's, I think, really tells a story of what ESI is all about in a very short period of time. So Carol, can I see if you can get going? There you go.
Welcome to Metro Vancouver Closeup, your look at sustainability in Metro Vancouver. One-fifth of our region is farmland. It supports the food industry and nourishes people, but these 61,000 hectares are also valuable ecologically. Langley Township has recognized the business case for supporting both and is partnering in a program that rewards farmers to maintain eco-friendly areas on their land. Bertrand Creek is in the center of a significant Langley watershed. It's 11 kilometers long, starting near Alder Grove, hooking around to the west, and turning south and draining into Washington State in the U.S.
It's in pristine condition, and we essentially want to keep it there, so that's the reason that we've gotten ourselves associated with this Ecological Services Initiative.
The Ecological Services Initiative is a $120,000 pilot project funded by the Township of Langley.
Ecological services are those provided by the environment, such as clean air, clean water, biodiversity, wildlife habitat, fish habitat. Those are values that often are not traded in marketplaces but have value to the public.
In protecting Bertrand Creek, the Township of Langley has shown that the creek's natural services have value.
We've seen in the past how poor practices, whether it's through industry or through agriculture, has damaged our creeks and our rivers and really been a detriment to salmon-spawning grounds and the species that live in those creeks. So it's very important for government to get involved and to help the farmers because it's a benefit not just for the farm that lives next to the creek, but it's a benefit for everybody.
It's also a benefit for the inhabitants of the creek.
We chose Bertrand Creek because it has very unique species at risk. There's two fish that identify under the federal Species at Risk Act. That's the Nook's Act bass and the same as sucker.
One of the key ways to protect the stream and its species is to prevent cow manure from entering it.
Essentially, we are looking at a manure management plan. We're looking at potentially doing something different with where we house the cows. And then we're looking at some maintenance of the stream bed itself because there's getting to be quite a bit of erosion.
The pilot project expects to see 10 farms adjacent to Bertrand Creek participate by the end of 2016.
Well, the creeks are really owned by everyone. They are important to the whole ecological system. So without us protecting it, working with the farmers, it may be that the farmers just can't afford to do it on their own, and we're asking them to take on quite a stewardship role.
The social benefits extend beyond this area. They extend throughout Metro Vancouver, even throughout the province, because I think all people are interested in these ecological values being maintained in the future. This was an example, one of our objectives is to increase awareness and public education. This is an example that it got a lot of mileage throughout the entire region. So I've got a few more slides I would just like to quickly get through. And most of these slides will be, the material will be encompassed in the final report. We're obligated to submit a final report to council by March 31st, but we'll just give you kind of the highlights, and then you'll have a much more detailed written report for your perusal later on. This slide is show, the red is obviously Bertrand Creek, and those blocks, blue blocks, crosshairs, there's eight of them, those are the eight farms that are signed up with the ESI initiative here in Langley. To kind of give you an idea, well, zero, I mean, that's the United States goes up, and we were really targeting farms that were west of 264th Street at the first. Oh, I might add that to get the knowledge out, together with the township, we advertised a program in January for people that wanted to participate, and these are people that have come for it. And there's, so there's eight participants, and we're talking to a few more farms, and our sort of, our objective is to have 10 signed in the three-year period. One of the first things that was done this year is repairing health assessments, and some of them were done by professionals that we had to hire. It's kind of an initial step to get an evaluation of its present condition in day one and then reevaluate in day three and see if there's any positive changes as a result of ESI. And there's a couple common things that have come up through these assessments. We have invasive weeds, and these are primarily blackberries and reed canary grass and ivy. They're causing damage. There's bank corrosion, as you can see in this photograph, exclusion fencing falling down, and nutrient management, as mentioned by Jim Dale's, owner of Kensington Farms, nutrient management support. And we've completed the nutrient management plan for their farm this year. But this picture really illustrates what is occurring in parts of the, not the entire Bertrand Creek, but in the lower end where the velocity is greater. Bank corrosion, reed canary grass, well, primarily blackberries, and fencing falling into the In terms of our obligation is to reach out to the community. These are the examples we have. We've just seen the video in our website. There's talk of the program. The video is also on another website. It's called Farmland Advantage. That's the provincial ESI website. And we did the fall farm tour, and Country Life wrote a really supportive article as a result of that farm tour. Now, in terms of money, the township allocated $30,000 to the budget for this year, for year one, and $24,600 was allocated according to those categories. The first one was $14,500 was transferred to the provincial ESI to cover the costs of provincial coordination. We had a conference here in March, their communication, development of their website, and payment to the professionals that did the repairing assessments on Bertrand Creek. $9,500 was paid to seven participating farmers. The eighth farmer was paid out of the provincial ESI budget. And $600 was allocated to the foundation administration for banking, insurance, and audit. So at the end of the year, there's a budget surplus of $4,500, $5,400, I got those numbers mixed, $5,400, which we wish to carry over to 2017 because in 2017, we want to do some projects on the ground that might be a little bit more costly than in year one. Year one is more, and he's setting the stage for year two. Now, to just give you a little bit idea of how it connects with the provincial initiative, we were fortunate that when they had their conference this year, they chose Langley because we were launching in Langley. So it was a really good opportunity to tie in, and people that attended conference could hear what's happening across the world in other parts of British Columbia. So it was kind of a really good kickoff for our project here in Langley. Now, specifically, our action items for 2017, we are talking to other farmers, but we need at least two more to sign up. And we want to work with farmers to implement on-ground projects to address invasive weeds, bank corrosion, and manure management. And the bank corrosion, we have an engineering study to determine how best to deal with erosion on one farm. And the manure management, two farms have completed their manure management plans, but we want to do more work on invasive weeds. We've talked to all the producers, and that's a really big thing with them. We'll continue to monitor each of the sites on a regular basis, working with the farmers, continue to coordinate with the provincial program, explore future funding options. We understand that Metro Vancouver has a sustainability fund of some nature. We're going to try to investigate whether we can expand our program with some funding options and others. Branding options, well, it's a little bit, I'm not a marketer, but I guess that's important to brand. And community engagement is very important in the program because in year three, we have to have a large awareness if we're going to move forward, and the community needs to be knowledgeable of what's happening. So that's important for year two and year three. And we'll be happy to answer any questions of Mayor and councilman.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I've got Counselor Fox and Counselor Richter and Davis. Counselor Fox?
Yeah, thank you very much to both of you for your presentation. It's an active group, obviously, and it's a contributing group, so it's, I'm glad that we're able to fund you and continued success with the money and with the initiatives. I just want to ask, you have focused on farms west of 264th. Why? And because there's some major farms east of 264th, and I'm just wondering what the intent was there?
When we, we have a biologist that's on our advisory committee, Mike Pearson. He was very knowledgeable of the species at risk. And to get a start, he thought the most valuable spawning ground for some of the species at risk is downstream of 264th Street. So it's kind of, we thought we'd try out something that we could manage in the first year based upon some biological information from the expert. Like, apparently Kensington Farms is probably the best in all of Lower Mainland for the Nook's Act bass. So that's kind of some of the reason, and we can go beyond that, and if we can't achieve our 10 southwest of 264, we can go above. In fact, Mike Pearson's done work with the farmers just on the east side of 264, the Blueberry Farmer, where they've done a lot of work on that, and that would be a natural to bring him into the program.
Good. Okay, if there's any Nook's Act bass left in there, because the water was pretty high the other day, and it was going pretty quick. They better be good swimmers.
Yeah.
Thanks. Counselor Richter?
Yes, and thank you for all the work you do for farming in the community. I really enjoyed that tour that we had on the farm tour last fall, and I was so glad that I was able to participate. I have a big question, and the only reason why I maybe have inside information on this question is because my son, my oldest son, is studying sustainable agriculture at Quantlin. But one of the real problems that young people who are studying agriculture are facing is access to land to farm on. Now, I know he's hooked up with the young agrarians, but I'm wondering, is there something that your group could do to help bring people together who are young farmers like him with people who have acreages that are sitting fallow right now, and they don't intend to farm them, they just like living in the country with big properties, so that some of that acreage could become productive farmland? I know in school, he's being taught to do as much as he can in like small lots, like to get as much off a small piece of property in terms of agricultural output. But I'm just wondering if that's something that you guys could help with, because it's a shame to turn out all these farmers, and they've got, they can't afford to farm here, so they go off to other provinces to do their farming.
No, we recognize that's a big, big challenge, and we've had discussions among the foundation members, what role we can play, and we're trying to link with young agrarians who recognize the same challenge. And just very recently, they had a land link seminar. I wasn't there, but perhaps Carol wasn't there. It was just last week, and what we can, if we can set up effective land link, and we've had presentations in Quebec, how they do it there, and how we do it here, and they've had it experienced in Victoria. It's, perhaps it is a solution. I don't know the pros and cons of establishing that link and what our role as a foundation. We recognize it, and if we can help, maybe it'll fit into our work plans somewhere down the road. But I honestly, I don't have like a silver bullet. I mean, and a lot of people are recognizing that. It's, I think throughout the Lower Mainland, the cost of land is so high, Vancouver Island, South Okanagan. It is, it is a real challenge. But I believe there is an opportunity because there are, when we had our workshop last fall, and one of our speakers was one of the people that, it wasn't the mayor, it was somebody that was doing something else, became a farmer, and he says, well, I, there was a person that visited with him and said, I have a bunch of land I'd like to get leased out to people. So that, it's hot, it's hit and miss type of situation. Nobody's really got a good handle on it, and I don't know what our resources are to take that on yet, honestly. But we have sympathy for the issue, and we recognize it, and hopefully, what work has been done recently by getting all the groups together out of that could morph some kind of a land link here in Langley.
Yeah, well, it would be really valuable, I think, if we look at the long term, because our province is investing money in educating these young people. It would be so good if they could stay and grow food here instead of, as I say, going to other parts of the country, because that's where they get land cheaper.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Davis?
I just, just a comment. I would like to thank you for coming and giving a presentation that tells exactly what you do, and I sit with the foundation and all the members of the board, and you're tireless. The energy, the experience that you guys, you make me tired just sitting there watching you. But I think it's really worthy of the funds that we spend because it's to do with agriculture, and I just, I thank you very much, and you guys are unbelievably hard workers, and I think you get it right in the point, and it's very worthy of your time, and I'd like to thank you as a council member for doing what you do. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for those comments. Appreciate them.
Counselor Arnison?
Hi, thank you very much for coming today. It's very much appreciated. I do have a couple of comments and I guess a question. So I'm wondering if you have any specific projects that you're working towards, like draft plans for 2017 for your ESI projects? Or are they carryovers from last year mostly?
One of the things we'd like to address this year is that, and what we try to do in, at the end of the year, I visit with each farmer that's participating in ESI, and I talk to them, well, how do you feel about this? Are we imposing? Do you see value? What would you like to see done? And just about all of them said, if you want to do something on the field, why don't you try to set a project to control the spread of these invasive weeds? So, and we're going to have a meeting within the next couple of months to plan out specifically what field projects we want to do, and then I agree to, I've seen all these properties, and it's a big, it's a big problem throughout all watercourses, actually, tell you, in Lower Mainland. And we're going to try to craft a program where we do actually on-farm demonstration, different mechanical methods. And it's amazing when you brainstorm what things come out. And one of the farmers, it said, well, you know, we used to have goats, and we never had any blackberries. So I don't know if that's in the way of doing it, but it'd be worthwhile trying the chemical, the mechanical, and the livestock approach to controlling weeds, and maybe something we would like to do this year, but we've got to put the groups together. And LEPs is very keen, and we've got a kind of a good working relationship with LEPs to kind of move something like that forward.
I have to comment on the fact of you're talking about the goats. I have seen somebody do that. It's amazing what they can do to decimate some blackberries. So I guess my other one was just to put something forward. I've noticed that from time to time, there's information that comes forward before council about particular areas that might be suitable for that, and most recently, LEPs and the Langley Field Naturalists have- And most recently, LEPs and the Langley Field Naturalists have indicated that there's agricultural lands in northwest Langley that they feel are worthy of protection. There might be some work that you could do to help to enhance the wetlands there. And just my final thought further to councillor Richter's comments, I have noticed over time that there actually are some communities in which, when they develop, they take community amenity charges, and they take the money and put it towards an agricultural reserve fund so that they are providing for funds for farmers. And, you know, that might be a way that we could do that as we tend to urbanize and make sure that we keep the right balance between those two areas there.
Yeah.
So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's, oh, sorry.
Carol, did you?
No, I just think we've met our ESI objectives for a year.
Yeah.
Great.
Sorry.
Do you have another comment?
That's fine.
No, I think we're okay.
I want to thank you for your presentation and certainly echo everybody's comments here. You're doing great, great work, and, you know, you're outstanding in your field.
Okay. We really do appreciate council support. Thank you.
That was, okay, thanks. Thank you. Do we need a motion to receive the presentation? Councillor Fox, second. Councillor Davis, just all those in favor, but show of hand.
Motion to strike Mayor's comments from the record.
All right. Carried unanimously. Thank you. We move on to correspondence. There are one, two pieces of correspondence that have a motion to receive, both. Councillor Arneson, second by councillor Fox. And there are no actions. I'm just going to on receipt first, and then I'm going to call a question, any discussion on receipt. So I'm just going to clear the queue. Councillor Qualley, on receipt?
I'm good on receipt.
Okay, you're good on receipt. Okay, so I'm going to call a question on G1 and G2. Carries unanimously. Anything rising from that? Councillor Fox?
So I'm interested in this first piece of correspondence, which is from Ripe Holdings, on a new taxi license. So can, we get these every so often. Can you, maybe through your worship to Mr. Backen, just remind us what we need to do here? And do we just receive it, or do we need to acknowledge it? How do we go from here?
Mr. Backen, if you could.
Your worship, typically, we receive them and leave it at that. Council does have the option of endorsing or providing comment, but however, unless there's direct knowledge of the applicant, we generally just simply pass it on to the motor vehicle carrier who has the jurisdiction and resources to investigate the operator.
They undertake that investigative piece?
They do the due diligence, that's right.
Okay, so we would just receive it and then leave it at that at this point. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Councillor Qualley?
Thanks. This application I've found super interesting. This is a variation on ride sharing. So this is an app-based company that's going to provide an option similar to Lyft and Uber. The only difference is that drivers don't use their own vehicles, they use an assigned vehicle. So I think this maybe doesn't fit necessarily within the current framework, but I think another option for people to use that isn't a traditional taxi or transit, I think, is a really great idea. What I would like to suggest that we do, and I don't know if I need to make a motion now or later, but I think that this should prompt us to send another letter to Minister Stone and Fassbender, reiterating our request for the government of British Columbia to create and implement a ride-sharing framework for the entire province. The government's in session now, and they could react in this session before they break for the provincial election. I'd like to urge them again to consider that our residents want improved access to transportation alternatives, and that we're eager for the government to embrace technology and provide some of these new options. So I don't know, do I need to make a motion? We've already decided as council that this is sort of important to our residents, but I think this gives us another opportunity to talk about this because this is another option being presented.
If you wish, you could do it in other business.
Okay, I'll bring it back in other business then. Thanks.
Councillor Richter?
Yes, I had a question with regards to the Canadian Association of Nurses in Oncology. And of course, they do marvelous work throughout the country and in B.C. But the letter that they sent us on page 27 said, "Thank you for your proclamation in 2016 in support of Oncology Nursing Day." And so my question through you to staff is, did we support their? No, okay. Do we need to? I don't know. I don't want to tell them we don't believe in them, but we just don't do proclamations.
I believe it's their letter and probably did a form letter. I don't know, Ms. Bauer, if you can elaborate on that?
We have a standard letter that goes back with requests for proclamations that says we've put it on the agenda as information item, and that we do not do proclamations, and we will send them the same letter.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on correspondence? Okay, let's move on to minutes of committees. And we have the Heritage Advisory Committee minutes under H1. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Long, councillor Davis, seconds. Any discussion on the minutes? See none, I'll call a question on H1. Carries unanimously. There is recommended motion, H2. Could I have a motion on H2? Councillor Long, councillor Qualley, seconds. Any discussion on H2? Councillor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. In anticipation of this happening, which I think is quite wonderful, that we're going to go forward with the commemoration of some new trees, I was thinking that it might be a nice addition to the event at Arbor Day to invite a local command of cadets. I think that they would be very interested. It coincides with the 100th anniversary of ME Ridge, and perhaps if we extended an invitation to them, they would be interested in coming.
Certainly. We'll pass it on to staff. Thank you. Anything else on H2? I'll call a question on H2. Carries unanimously. H3, could I have a motion, please? Councillor Long, second by councillor Davis. Discussion on H3. Okay, hang on, let's get back here. Councillor Richter?
I just want to say, I think this is wonderful, that they're going to be able to use some of this tree now, and hopefully in the future. And maple is just a beautiful wood when it's properly finished into something. So I think this will be, this will be very, very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Long?
And just to expand on that, we also gave the wood to Mr. Peppin, who has his own mill, and he'll make sure that it's preserved, and he'll be the one, sort of the keeper of the wood too. So he'll bring back information when people request pieces of the wood.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'll call a question on H3. Carries unanimously. We now move on to other business, and councillor Qualley, you had a piece of other business. Councillor Qualley?
Thank you. So just in relation to the application or the correspondence we received regarding the new taxi license, I'd like us to send another letter to Minister Stone and Fassbender, copying this, or attaching this license application, and reiterating our request for the government to create and implement a ride-sharing framework.
Get that, Ms. Bauer? And seconded by councillor Fox? Councillor Fox, did you second? Yep, thank you. I'm going to have to clear the queue. I know it was, I've got Richter and Long on it, but for any discussion, any discussion on that motion? Councillor Long?
Yeah, just maybe staff can enlighten us, because this application, even though it has some rideshare aspects to it, does it require new legislation for it to operate? Or is it operating within the existing guidelines? Because if that's the case, either way, I'm supportive of the letter, but we need to make sure we say that in the letter, that, you know, here's a good example of it. But what, by the way, what happened with our other letter is really what you're saying, right? What's going on?
Oh, I understand that this is following the procedure for taxi licenses, is what we require of any carrier. And they have a cool way of, they have another way. And taxi companies have embraced the apps too. There's other ways to.
So I think it should be important that the letter doesn't say, we endorse or don't endorse, or we don't, you know, we don't like this chap, or we do like this outfit, I should say, but we're saying simultaneously, we want to know what's going on with the other legislation.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, I think that's the intent. Thank you. I'm going to call a question on that. That would be I1. I1. And that's carries unanimously. And some other business, councillor Richter?
Yes, I have some items here in the distribution list that I'd like to refer to staff. The first one is in today's distribution list, item number eight, with regards to a 70-year-old resident who tripped over a uneven cement slab at the Murrayville Children's Playground. Very frightening for a senior to trip and run the risk of breaking a hip or something. So I'm wondering if I could get that referred to staff to investigate.
Thank you, staff. Mr. Saffian indicating they're already on it, is that correct?
Yes, your worship. Staff is acting on that. There's been a number of cases because of the weather conditions that we've had, and staff is aware of that one and is following up.
Great, thank you. Okay, councillor?
Next item is number nine, with regards to rat problem in Bertrand Creek, by Bertrand Creek from, and this was sent from the Bertrand Creek Enhancement Society. The letter claims that part of the problem has been caused by the new development that's going in there where trees, et cetera, have been removed, and so these rats are homeless and seeking new homes in nearby areas.
Four-legged homeless rats.
Yes, four-legged. So I'm wondering if we could refer that one to staff as well to look into, to see if there's something we could do with regards to rat control.
Certainly, I think advise those that are working there to do some proper procedures. Is that correct on rat?
Yes, your worship. The agency responsible is actually the Health Department. We refer that matter to the Fraser Health.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item number 10, also on today's distribution list, the claim that a racist organization called the Soldiers of Odin are organizing in Langley. I'm very concerned to hear about this, and this comes from someone who's a member of the Coalition Against Bigotry. I'm wondering if it would be worthwhile to work with them on a public forum against racism and other forms of bigotry, and I'd like to refer that one to staff as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Going to our distribution list from Thursday, February 16th. Item number 10, a letter from Dan Harder, who lives out in rural Langley. Looks like it's very close to Aldgrove, 26th and 273rd. Senior, obviously, who was landlocked as a result of all the snow and the ice and the rain and everything else that we got. Is there something that we can make available to seniors? Like if they're really stuck, like this individual was, that they could put a request in? Like, do we have a request line where we can go and plow them out?
I understand there's a request line, and he went a different route, but certainly there's a request line. Is that correct, Mr. Saffian? Saffian, people can call in when they have a special difficulty, and our staff do go out, is that correct? Yeah.
Okay.
So they just went a different route and didn't, I don't know if they contacted us, but I wasn't aware of it, so.
Not to my knowledge, your worship.
I wonder if we could run that in the township page then, so that people can clip it out and tuck it away for next year.
Remind people of what our, and it's for all service requests, not just.
Yeah. And the last item I'd like to refer to is the one, number three, on the items distributed last week on Terra Farms property with regards to the removal of a lot of old, large, beautiful trees off Terra Farms. Now, I understand from the memo that this is on ALR land. There's nothing we can really do about it. But I'm wondering if there is something that we could do about it? If Suri apparently has this bylaw that allows Suri to work with farmers to maintain stands of old trees, is there any reason why we couldn't talk to the ALC and ask them if we could have the same kind of latitude as Suri's got in this regard? Particularly with Terra Farms. I mean, it's clear to me that the implication is this is being cleared for farming, but I think it's going to be cleared for farming of high-density development going forward.
Well, we, certainly, anything we do would be applicable to all agricultural land in the township. Mr. Backen has some comments. I know we've discussed this in these.
Your worship, the straight, the direct answer is, we've asked the ALC that very question, who's taking it up with the Ministry of Agriculture, to see if they'd be amenable to Langley having the same bylaw as Suri. There's no response forthcoming yet, and we'll keep council advised. Our concern is that Suri's bylaw was never actually formally approved by the Ministry of Agriculture. It was not a regulated community, so as a consequence, it passed a bylaw, and it remains consistent with the right to farm legislation until such time as someone challenges it and no one is so challenged it. We're not certain what the ministry's position is on that bylaw, but we're, I guess we're going to get an answer at some point through the Agricultural Land Commission as to whether or not they'd be entertaining such a bylaw for Langley.
As long as they grow a few goats, they're okay.
Yeah, well, it just seems to me, we've just heard a very excellent presentation from the Sustainable Agriculture Foundation on ecological initiatives. Maintaining old growth forests is an ecological initiative because those trees contribute to air quality for all of us. There must be something that can be done by somebody rather than allowing development companies that own land, just because it's in the ALC, being able to clear cut it. There's got to be something.
The follow-up to that is that we, the 17 acres is only about, well, there's another 35 or 40 acres on that site as well, and we're looking at options for that site, given its history and its slope, for example. So we'll be trying to bring something forward on that area and the entire Arbor ribbon to future meetings.
Yeah, because what happens to the Arbor ribbon? You're right. Thank you.
And just to be fair to developers, I know several people who have a development businesses and builders who have very large, active agriculture enterprises and farms. So there is, you know, some do, some don't, you know. Oh, sorry, I thought you were finished.
Yeah, I just had one more item, and it's more a query than anything. I understand there was a very successful candidates debate for the Conservative leadership in Langley on Saturday. But because we have a street that is split and dog-legged, which is 216th Street, I'm wondering if perhaps we should rename the upper part of 216th Street to something like Davisstead Avenue?
Heritage Street.
A heritage street.
I think there's a requirement on our policy that they have to be dead.
It might be dead, but.
Well, there's Henry Davis.
I'm sure you can find a Davis.
Last Davis. Dead Davis.
There you go. Good idea. Okay, councillor Long, you're on.
Well, your worship, I just want to bring the council's attention. Every morning, you turn on the radio, and there is an accident at 264th. It's east of 264th, it's west of 264th, it's at 264th. And, you know, not only is that impeding the movement of traffic throughout the region, but it must be costing our township of Langley Fire Department all kinds of grief, because every time there's an accident, they have to attend. So I've brought this up a few other times, but I mean, it's just, it's just ongoing, and I wonder if there's anything that we can do to encourage the ministry to do a study as to why these things are happening? There must be some things that could be done to improve, maybe the, well, if it's just lousy drivers, how come they're only having an accident at 264th? You'd think they'd be having accidents everywhere. So anyway, we have to do something about it. And on that note as well, Fraser Highway is getting incredibly congested as a result of the freeway, first of all, but even with the freeway flowing, there's backups constantly right through Aldgrove from 264th and from 248th. Now, I know that the expansion of Fraser Highway is always on the radar, but I'd like to just bring this to the attention of council. Maybe we could have an updated report, put a little extra pressure on that. Perhaps part of the solution would be some provincial money on Fraser Highway to increase. It's a four-lane, so that'll take some pressure off the freeway, but we've got to do something.
Certainly.
Chief Gambles here, it must be, you know, it's terrible. And what's going to happen if there's two emergencies at once? You've got, you know, everybody out there, right?
With, there are improvements, I believe, in this year's budget for downtown Langley and Fraser Highway, I mean downtown Aldgrove for Fraser Highway, and then certainly, and that's the TransLink funding that we get every year, so hopefully that'll help, but I know it's not the solution. And the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure is certainly looking at a long-term solution to Highway 1 all the way through to Wackam Road, and what piece they'll announce and where it's going to go, hard to say, but I know they are looking at those areas, and it's on their radar.
Can we just get an update formally from staff, so we have something we can?
Yeah, we can provide a memo just where it's at.
Thank you very much, your worship.
Okay, any other business? Councillor Davis?
Termination.
Councillor Davis terminates the meeting with his resolution. And do I need, have a second, or councillor Whitmarsh? All those in favor, pose, carried. Thank you.